Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the beginning of Series Six of Coffee with Camille. My name is Dr. Camille Brown, Associate Superintendent for School Leadership and Community Program. We do apologize for the tech delays, and we are waiting for one more of our panelists, and as soon as he joins in, but we're going to start the conversation. I do want to, again, thank everyone for everything that you have done. I'm not examining this screen. I want to just kind of thank everybody for everything that you have done to sign on, to participate, and, you know, just for the purposes of our recording, we want to say that Series One to Five are all archived on the Archdiocese of Baltimore website. So if you want information on strategic planning, or recruitment, membership, or any other strategies that you need to operate your school and your school board, please direct your attention to the website. As usually, we are coming to you live from the Catholic Center here at 320 Cathedral Street in downtown Baltimore, and you can participate in the discussion simply by typing in a question. And during the conversation, I will be monitoring the GoToMeetings website, but also I'll be monitoring my personal email at camille.brown@archbaltimore.org. So, again, it's my name with a dot in between, and then @archbaltimore.org. So please feel free to send in your comments or questions, and we will get to as many as we can. Our special guest today, now look, we have a wonderful broadcast for you, and we're going to get really moving in a second. We have Ms. Trish Garland from School of the Incarnation School Board. Good morning, Trish.
Good morning, Dr. Brown. Good morning, everyone.
And right now on the phone, Ms. Linda Murphy from School of the Cathedral School Board. Good morning, Linda.
Good morning, Dr. Brown.
And I will say to you that Mr. Chris Curran's from St. John Regional School Board. There's still a little minor glitch happening, but IT is on the job, so when Chris is on, he'll just jump into the conversation. But I want to really just thank you both for coming to talk about our topic today, which is the School Board Collaborative. So I guess, as we begin, maybe we should give a pinch of a history. We thought it would be a great idea to expand resources, expand materials, to help all of the boards, all of the principals, all the chairs, all of the pastors, all the canonical reps, and all the school board members, if we followed the collaborative structure that we currently have in place for principals, and also for advancement directors, and for our guidance counselors. So, and it follows suit, and everything is regionally. So we have a Western Maryland collaborative, which is their liaison person, their leader would be Chris, and that's Bishop Walsh, Mother Seton in Emmitsburg, St. John Regional in Frederick, St. John Westminster, St. Mary's Hagerstown, and Sacred Heart Glendon. And then, Trish, your collaborative is Anna Rundle in Howard County. So all of the school boards that would be with you are Monsignor Slay, Our Lady of Perpetual Help, Resurrection St. Paul, St. Augustine, St. Jane Francis, St. John Severna Park, St. Louis, St. Mary's, Annapolis, St. Philip Mary, and School of the Incarnation. And then Linda, the core team collaborative of North Baltimore would be with you, and that's Cathedral, Immaculate Conception, Immaculate Heart of Mary, Our Lady of Grace, St. Joan of Arc, St. John's Long Green Valley, St. Joseph Cockeysville, St. Joseph Fullerton, St. Margaret, St. Pius the Tenth, St. Stevens Bradshaw, and St. Earthless. And then the Metro Baltimore Collaborative, and Mr. Jim Selinger and I will be working with that collaborative. In fact, we're meeting with the school board chairs tonight. St. Agnes, Archbishop Borders, Cardinal Sheen, St. Casimir, St. Clement, St. Francis of Assisi, Holy Angels, St. James and John, John Paul Regional, St. Mark, St. Michael the Archangel, Our Lady of Victory, Our Lady of Mount Carmel, Our Lady of Hope, St. Luke, and St. Thomas Aquinas. And then finally, we have a collaborative made up of school board chairs for the high schools. And Joyce Becker is our other team member. She's from Archbishop Curly, and that team is composed of Archbishop Curly, Archbishop Spalding, Bishop Walsh, St. John's Catholic Prep, St. Maria Goretty High School, St. Mary's High School, and Our Lady of Mount Carmel, Middle School and High School, and then St. Keough High School. So that covers us across the archdiocese. So if you're listening, and you want to know who is the person that you would collaborate with, I've just mentioned all the people. But let's start our discussion. So welcome again. Let's talk about a few things. Let's talk about the role of the school board collaborative team. So Linda-
Camille, can you hear me?
Oh, Chris-
I'm sorry.
Welcome to the broadcast. We've been waiting for you.
Sorry to interrupt. They just unmuted me. Thank you.
That's great. We just introduced you, and we also introduced the schools that would fall underneath you. So we haven't even, we haven't started our true discussion yet. So you're-
Very good.
-on time. So thank you, and God bless you.
Perfect.
I bless all of you for doing great work.
Thank you.
What we'll do is I'll ask questions, and then either one of you could chime in, and I'll be monitoring for questions as well, so we'll try to get as many questions in as possible, okay? So how do you see yourself assisting your individual boards through your role? Who wants to jump in with that question?
Good morning. It's Linda Murphy. I would love to talk about this. I think the collaborative are a wonderful idea, and I just see a lot of power in sharing resources, experience. We, you know, can do training and webinars, share materials. And we, at our initial meeting, which was about a week and a half ago, it was just wonderful to sit down with the other board chairs in my collaborative and learn about some of the challenges that they're facing, and finding out that we're all facing very similar challenges. And, you know, if we can work on those together, I just think there's a lot of power there.
Yeah, I can chime in. Chris, I can chime in. I totally agree. The thing I was struck by, and I think we talked about in LA, is how school boards, you're always in one state, one of three states in LA. I mean, either you're starting off, and you have kind of new board members, or you're sort of at a maturity level, or some board members have rotated off, and you're kind of starting over the process of training, and, you know, kind of reforming yourself. And it's, I think if you spread this out among several school boards, you kind of have someone in one of those three stages, and they can kind of help fill in the gaps for others, kind of pull people along, and help with planning and various things. I think that's a nice setup.
Now, serving as liaison with, let's talk about you being a liaison with the Department of Catholic Schools. How do you think we can assist you, or how do you see us collaborating? Anybody?
I find there's so much material out there, I mean, just good information, that I, you know, I don't know what I don't know. And I kind of feel like, you know, having a point of contact that can collect all that information and somehow share it in some fashion. I'm a technology geek. I would love to figure out some way to kind of share it, like in, you know, Google Docs or something, where everyone can reach it, it can be maintained by everyone.
You know, that is a very good idea, Chris. We, I'm going to talk to IT when this webinar is over about creating some sort of Google Docs account, or some sort of, either a Dropbox.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if Dropbox or Google Docs, whichever one would be easily accessible to everyone, where we can just drop materials in there. Because I know right now, by having all of the webinars on the Archdiocese of Baltimore website, school boards and individual school board members have been accessing those and using them for training. I've heard they've been used on retreats throughout the strategic planning process. They've been using especially Brother Bill Campbell's work that we used early on in 2011, and a lot of Dr. Regina Haney's archived material. But having some sort of Dropbox zone or Google Docs is a great idea. Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning. This is Trish Garland. Regarding the liaison with the Department of Catholic Schools, what I find very valuable is that we can learn about archdiocesan enrollment models, recruiting strategies, tuition guidance, website initiatives. Learning all these things from the archdiocesan level will give us a better perspective on our relationship with the school faculty, and especially with the head of school, our school principals. Because the archdiocese has a relationship with the school principals, and it's our responsibility to work not only with our school boards, but with the school principals as well. And I think this helps us open our eyes as to some of the constraints and some of the guidance that the principals are getting, so that we can have a better conversation with them as we move forward with the strategies for the school board and relationship with the schools.
The, you know, I think that your point about learning about tuition assistance and some of the other finer points, you know, it's wonderful that the three of you are on this morning, because, as you know, we've been having school board dinners with Mr. Jim Selinger, and at those meetings, we've been able to talk about some key points about how to make your boards, you know, move on to the next step. And so we talked about tuition assistance, and we, you know, we talked about strategic planning, we talked about sharing resources. So tying in, or cluing in to the whole process from, you know, the school board level and AOB level, I think the people who will benefit from that are certainly the boards, but the school community itself, because it's this sort of easy flow of information now. But the key is tuning in. So I definitely agree with what you're saying. Any other thoughts? Anybody else want to chime in with any other thoughts?
I just, this is Linda again. I think the collaboratives are just a great way to leverage scale across the archdiocese, and to be consistent and promote best practices on board leadership.
I hear what you're saying.
It might also help with DCS resources, because I get the, I'm sure you get the same question from all the different boards over and over again. I mean, in some ways, maybe you'd be able to answer certain things one time, and, you know, the information's spread, and it might take a little bit of the strain off of your resources.
Absolutely. Now, if everybody knows, I'm going to try to move through, because I think we're going to, we're starting to get some questions. But let's talk about the new refreshed manual. So as you all know, at our dinners, we've been giving the refreshed Fall 2016 School Board Manual. Each school board chair receives three copies, and one was for the pastor or the canonical rep, depending on your governance model, one was for the principal, and then one for the school board chair. We also have this manual electronically, and all the forms in the manual now are online fillable. And that's been, you know, a lot of work from our admin staff here. They've been fabulous to make that happen for all of us. So let's talk about this newly refreshed manual. How can the board effectively utilize this refreshed manual to create excellent boards? Any thoughts?
This is Linda.
Go ahead. Just jump in.
Okay. So, you know, I think the manual is just an excellent resource for all of us, and I encourage everyone to read it. And it's just, it's a reminder that, you know, we have wonderful principals at our schools. They work very hard, and they really need expertise at the board level to help them in various areas, such as financial management, strategic planning, facilities, and advancement activities. And the manual goes through each of those areas, and there is a wonderful appendix in the back of the manual that, as Camille, Dr. Brown mentioned, there are, you know, great forms for us to use, such as a grid for selecting new members on the board, so that you make sure that you have all of the skill sets that are needed represented on the board. There's a new board orientation checklist, and there's even a school board file to show you how to keep everything organized at the school board level. So I think it's a great piece of work, and I'm very happy their diocese has updated it.
Okay. Thank you. One of my big things about this new manual, like some people are saying, "Oh, yeah, I read the manual before. What's new? What's new in here?" Quite a bit. I do want to point out that when we were at LMU, Dr. Regina Haney shared with us a school board member pledge, and so we've included that into the new document. I also want to point out that it's always been in the manual that we have job descriptions for each one of the committees. And as you know, the work of the board is done through committees. And I just wanted to highlight that if you take a study of these committees, it might help you with your recruitment process, because then you'll know, "Okay, I need to find people who are experienced in development. Well, what are they going to have to do when they get on the development committee?" All of that is highlighted in the manual. Also, I received questions about how can we make sure we have our board meeting happen in an hour or an hour and a half? One of the key things that we have in this manual are committee report forms, so that as the committees are meeting, they can fill out this report form easily, indicating areas that were discussed, impacts to the budget, next steps. And those reports will go out then at least a week in advance, so that when you get to the board meeting, people are not reading their reports, because they've already read them. Just that when a report is given, it's like a minute, a minute and a half, and then you're asking just for discussion of key points, and you keep the minute, the meeting moving along. So, and also what we've done is give you some sample agendas in here of what a board meeting could look like. So, having said all that, are there any other thoughts about using the new school board manual to create excellent boards?
Yeah, I think it's an excellent resource, and I, it's the first thing I really found, it's the most, document I use the most. It's the first thing I really found that kind of said, "Oh, this is everything," you know, it's kind of the big checklist, everything you need to think about. The one thing I noticed, I read through it again, and you were speaking about committees, and the membership committee, and we discussed this a little bit in the conference in Los Angeles, but I didn't read carefully enough to see how broad some of these committees could be, if you're, you know, if you're creative. So for instance, the membership committee talks about not only orientation of new board members, but ongoing continuing education. And I have a member that's particularly interested in finding resources and is going to take the point on that, is going to identify resources that we'll certainly share on this Google Docs platform we discussed. But I just think that's neat, and that's only covered in like a half of a phrase in the description, but if I carefully read it, I see that it's all there. So it bears reading over multiple times.
That's absolutely true. Absolutely true. Okay. If there are no other comments, and we can, again, we can always come back. If anybody has a question, please dial in, type in your question, and we will get it on. Or just send me an email, because I am monitoring my email throughout the broadcast. Okay. So now, let's talk about how we can utilize the national standards and benchmarks to move our boards to a next level towards excellence. And by now, we have been through accreditation, so everybody knows what the national standards and benchmarks are about. So how can we utilize them? Any thoughts? Anybody want to jump in?
Sure. This is Trish. The section of the national benchmarks that most applies to us is Section Two, Governance and Leadership. The standard five is describing that an excellent school board has a governing body that has legitimate authorities, and then also that is, standard six, that is empowered to do the authority areas that are within the guidelines as expressed in the school board manual. And these, what we have, what the school board chairs have been given is sort of a Cliff's Notes version of the national standards. But these national standards are available online, and we can make those URLs available to you, and they have some pretty good information there that you can go through to benchmark your own activities at the school level, at the board level, for your schools.
Okay. One of my key things, and again, if anybody's ready to jump in, just jump in, but one of my key things about utilizing these national standards and benchmarks, for the boards to really zero in to Standards Five and Six, as Trish just mentioned. Standard Five says that an excellent Catholic school has a governing body that recognizes and respects the roles of the appropriate and legitimate authorities, and exercises responsible decision-making, in collaboration with the leadership team for development and oversight of the school's fidelity to mission, academic excellence, and operational vitality. So there's the standard. And then underneath that standard, there are six benchmarks. And each one of those benchmarks, if, you know, you want to move towards excellence, may be a good idea to take each one of the benchmarks separately. How well are we doing in this area? How well are we doing? And then you can figure out how close to excellence, or what are your next steps to get to wherever you perceive to be excellent. Standard Six says an excellent Catholic school has a qualified leader, leadership team, empowered by the governing body, to realize and implement school's mission and vision. So under there, you have seven benchmarks. And again, I would just ask, as a board, as one body, you take each one of those benchmarks, and how well are we doing? I would also recommend to you, when you go online and look up CatholicSchoolStandards.org, the benchmarks, the whole document will come up. But when you do that, if you go across at the top of the webpage, you'll see assessment tools. If you click on the assessment tools, you'll find out that all of these standards come with rubrics. And you can download the rubrics, and the rubrics will tell you, you know, "We exceed the standard," or "We need the standard," or, you know, "We somewhat need the standard." So, and then there's indicators, that, an indicator narrative where you can see, "Okay, this applies to us. This applies to us." So the rubrics are there, already done for you, and as a governing body, I think it's a great idea to go take a look at those and apply them. They can be used at school board meetings, even if you took five or 10 minutes out of each school board meeting to take a look at one rubric. Over time, you'll be moving towards efficiency and excellence as a board. The last thing that I wanted to say, too, is under that assessment tool, there's a survey to do like a little spot check. How well are we doing? Either the board members can take the survey, or you can send the survey out to like a sampling group in your community to check up on how well you're doing. So there's a lot to these national standards and benchmarks that really do encourage you to use with your board. Okay. I've spoken enough. Anybody else? Chris?
I just had a quick question about that. So that's interesting. I mean, I, it makes sense to me to do the comparisons to the benchmark throughout the year, but also I was wondering, can you see that as being basis of at least maybe part of a retreat agenda?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Think that would be-
Yes. I would use these in conjunction with the self-assessment that's in the appendix of the school board manual.
Okay.
And there's a school board self-assessment, and the self-assessment starts off with mission and purpose. It goes into strategic planning, accountability, and then you have advancement, financial management, the board agenda, program and services, and so forth. But that is a good opportunity to take a look at how well we're doing, and to reflect on what you need to do moving forward. What are our next steps? What are our goals? What are our priorities? What type of action are we prepared to take to move to the next step? So absolutely, I would. All right.
I was thinking one approach might be to send some of the information out ahead of time and collect it, and then, and then go ahead and discuss it at a retreat. Anyway, I'll think about that a little bit.
Dr. Brown, this is Trish. I would like to underscore your thoughts on the value in doing the school board self-evaluation assessment that's in the school board manual. We've been doing that as long as I've been on the school board, and having each school board member fill that out in an honest way, you get some really good feedback on the way that the meetings are managed, the items that we talk about, board development, and additionally, how well the school board actually knows some of the things that we think we all might know on the school board. And so I have found that to be a very valuable tool, and what we do is I collate all the results, and then I share that with the school board at the first meeting of the year, so that we can add some focus areas to our goals for each of the committees during the year to try to fill in some of the gaps that we didn't have from the prior year.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm going to, see, I'm going to try to move ahead. We've been talking, saying some good things, but I'm noticing that half of our time is gone already, and we haven't gotten to LMU. So I want to sort of jump ahead and just ask, what are some key factors discussed at the LMU conference that would be beneficial to your school board member, colleagues in the Archdiocese of Baltimore? What do you think? Key factors?
This is Linda Murphy. It was a wonderful conference. It was so spiritual, and, you know, just understanding how important the role of a board is in the school's mission, and, you know, taking the time to reflect, contemplate, and imagine. And if I could just go back to the national standards and benchmarks again, I would encourage everyone to read Section One as well. The prelude is the defining characteristics of Catholic schools, that we are centered in the Person of Jesus Christ, that we contribute to the evangelizing mission of the Church. Catholic schools are distinguished by excellence, committed to educate the whole child, and we had a wonderful talk at the beginning of the conference about that concept, steeped in a Catholic worldview. Steeped in a Catholic worldview, sustained by gospel witness, shaped by communion and community, accessible to all students, and established by the express authority of the bishop. And it's just, it's such a thoughtful message of how we, as board members, should go about our work.
Anybody else?
One thing that I, that I came back from, it was one, you know, when you talk about the role of a board or individual board member, and I thought the expression, I hadn't heard it before, put this way, they talked about being articulate ambassadors. And that really kind of resonated with me, and it, it sounds a little bit like it's passive, but it's definitely not a passive thing. It's on you to educate yourself about the workings of the Archdiocese and your individual school, so that if you have a minute or two to answer the question, if someone says, "What do you do?", and you're just talking about being on a school board, you can give them a minute or two, a very concise, you know, explanation of what the, what the work is that you do with the board.
For me, this is Trish. The conference was really a spiritual awakening for me as it relates to my work with the school board. And as Linda mentioned, I agree with reading the first benchmark for all of us, and to remember that what makes us different from other schools is our Catholic identity, and that we should keep that in all of our work. Some of the other things I learned is that process is very much important, as the results are, to be respectful of each other's thoughts, and how we process data, and how we do our jobs. We're all volunteers, and so we all bring special values to the school board. The third item I learned was working through committees. Very important, as we don't stretch our school board to do too much work. Bring the, utilize the committees to help do the work, and also utilize committees as a way to have newer school board members, maybe get mentored from the committee chairs, such that then they might be able to move into those positions as some of your committee chairs leave your school board. And then finally, I'd like to give some kudos to Dr. Brown and her staff for the development of our School Board Manual, because it was clear when we were out there, that some of the other attendees from other dioceses across the country, they don't have the resources that we have. So we're kind of the blue ribbon of school board leadership and resources in the Archdiocese of Baltimore. And the others that were there were very interested in our school board manuals, and they were going to take that as a model to go back throughout the country, and utilize that similar-type manual with their schools.
Yeah, quite a few people are looking at our School Board Manual right now, quite a few. Can I just say, one, a couple of thoughts. Did everybody have a chance to talk about LMU? Because I had a few thoughts just for the recording, so that everybody would have some other things to take away.
This is Linda. I wanted to add one more thing that we learned, and that was the importance of the three Rs., which are roles, responsibilities, and relationships, and how important each of those is to the work that we do. And again, just pointing to the wonderful resources that we've discussed so far on this webinar, that will help us in those, in those three Rs.
Okay, thank you. For the purposes, for everyone who didn't have a chance to go after LMU, the door is still open. We are going to be moving to some online format to, you know, get more LMU leadership information out to us. But I wanted to just very briefly talk about Vatican II documents. And I know, here we are, fifty, what, 51, 52 years after Vatican II, and some people are still in a discovery, understanding role about the role of the laity. That Vatican II called the laity into some other important actions in the Church. And when we were at LMU, they were talking about us being in a post-Vatican II world. We must engage and encounter each other in relationship with Jesus, and that there is a commitment towards academic excellence, not simply an individual pursuit, but a communal approach, that all of us are moving towards excellence. And who's going to benefit if the board is moving towards excellence? The school, and our children, and their parents. Isn't that what we want? So they were talking about an effective Catholic school community is where we're collaborating with each other, and that we want to be available to all of our students, celebrating diversity, meeting the needs of the differently-abled. And then my final thing is that my walk away, my takeaway, was that I had three points. There was a message. How does Jesus' message come to life in our school community? And does the board base its decisions through gospel values? I thought that was important. The community, how does the school develop and celebrate the community for all stakeholders? How are we building this up? And how are we allowing leadership to form in the community? And my last point was about service. How do the students understand service? And as a board, what examples do we offer to show that this is a regular practice in the global church and in our local church? So those were just a few of my thoughts, takeaways from LMU. But I do want to thank all of you for coming, because you heard some of the same things that I heard, and if not more. But anyway, let's see, in the rest of our time, I'm still checking for a couple of questions. So far, three of our five collaborative boards have joined Mr. Jim Selinger and myself for dinner to discuss some key board issues. Could you share some of your takeaways from these gatherings? And I know the three of you have been out to dinner with us already, and we've had some fruitful conversations. What do you think? What would you like to share with those listening today?
This is Trish. One of the things we talked about was a three-tier approach to high-performance boards. One is to think about the big picture and be visionary. The second is our strategic responsibility. And the third is individual responsibility. So not getting bogged down into the personnel decisions or curricula instructions, but stay big, think big, provide the resources that the school needs, but let the school staff implement the curriculum and programs.
That's important. Thank you for saying that. Okay, anyone, anyone else?
Yeah, this is Chris. I recall, one of the, one of the things that I know was on your and on Jim's mind, was the idea of recruiting the best possible board members, and it kind of reminded me something else from LMU. We talked a little bit about, you know, building the right kind of board, and it's a manage, it's a matter of knowledge and skills, but also of disposition, which is a term I hadn't thought about before. But, you know, being thoughtful about people, are they, are they open-minded, you know, are they open to compromise and adaptation and following through, and all the kind of, you know, softer skills. A lot of times, I think, I tend to think of recruiting as what kind of skill set do we need? It's also disposition. And I thought that was, that was interesting.
I'm glad you said that, Chris, because when we were at LMU, and that conversation was coming up, that the piece that stuck in my head from LMU was about an elevator speech.
Yes.
Right. So if you're in the elevator, and somebody knows that you're on Saint So-and-so's school board, and they say, "So what do you do as a school board member? Tell us about it." What could you say about your board and your school in a brief elevator ride to excite someone about what you're doing? That's the question. And so, say, just so brief, you know how fast those elevator rides go? So for everyone listening...
Oh, yeah.
I'm asking you, think about this, reflect on it, pray on it with your board. What could we say about ourselves in a brief elevator ride? And that's something to do, something else to do on retreat, something else to initiate during a school board meeting. Okay. Anybody else?
I'll tell you one framework from LMU, just real quickly, one framework from LMU that helped me. We talked about the threefold mission of the, of the school itself, would be, you know, proclaiming the gospel, building community, service to our brothers and sisters. And I mean, if you can, if you can work an elevator talk around, around those things, I think that's probably a good start.
Interesting. Okay, let's, let's jump onto, so what are some of your hopes and visions for your boards, and for all ALB boards? As core leadership team members, what do you think? What's on your mind these days?
This is Linda. You know, again, the conference that we went to at Loyola Marymount University in Los Angeles, it was such a good spiritual foundation for everything related to being an effective and efficient school board. And, you know, just to, to take our boards to the next level, and really invite each and every board member to do good and noble work for the love of the school and its children. And I found that very visionary, and, you know, as Trish mentioned earlier, it was just a spiritual awakening to how important each school's mission is, and how the board can further that mission.
One, a question has come up. We were talking about the takeaways from LMU, and a question was, "How do you think we can implement LMU takeaways?" Head in. Anybody like to jump in on that question?
Sure. Trish, one of the items was there are some very good materials that were provided and presentations. And so we have a request in to the staff to provide those presentations, that then we, as the core leadership team, can push those out to the school board chairs, and perhaps they could use those in, maybe in a retreat, or in some of their meetings.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I totally agree. That was, those were some great resources there, and I was trying to keep, you know, take as good a note as I could. There was just too much material to keep up.
Right, right. I know that LMU was definitely an opportunity to reflect, to contemplate, and as our good friend Regina Haney said, to imagine what could be on our boards. So, and you know what? I want, team, I want to thank you publicly, because you really represented the Archdiocese well, and you made an impression. And the folks at LMU want to collaborate with us in the future. So you went out and really spoke well about things that you're doing, and I think that that was really good for the whole Archdiocese, and certainly a credit to your school boards and your schools. So thanks a lot, I do want to say that. So we're talking about some other hopes and visions. Does anybody else want to say anything before I move on? Because, okay, that hurt. Go ahead.
This is Chris. I was just going to say, I guess my, in some, I guess I'm always focused on recruitment, and it's, you know, I'd like it to become kind of a self-sustaining thing. I mean, we're, we're in a pretty good place right now, and we've got some really good board members. And, yeah, I always look forward, when at some point either their term is up, you know, finding the next set of great board members. And I just, I think I'd like to get to the point where everyone's in, in recruiting mode all the time. You know what I mean? Always looking for the right people for the board and for committees, and just not making it a, you know, when it's needed kind of thing, making it a constant kind of thing.
You, you know, you can...
And that's hard, that's difficult.
It's hard. And you bring up a memory of mine, and we know Dr. Regina Haney is a good friend of ours, and has been a longtime friend of mine, but she's really the go-to person for board development. And one of the things that she always says is, "Inch by inch is a cinch, yard by yard is hard."
Yeah.
Inch by inch. So if you're doing this little by little, you're always constantly looking for great board members, you're always trying to, you know, vet people, and figure out, what is this, let's take a snapshot of our board, let's see where we are, let's look at the needs of our community now. You can really build a great board by doing that, developing a list. You always have a list of candidates. You're asking good questions about who are these people? Where do we, how can they fit into the board? What are our needs? So you always know where the holes are in your board, and you're always seeking to plug them in, so that's inch by inch. But if we wait till one time during the year to figure out what we're doing, or if we wait until, oh my gosh, three years have gone by, and some key members are about to roll off the board, then you have like a whole yard to try to, to process, and it's more, it's much difficult at that point. So inch by inch, inch, yard by yard is hard.
I love that. And she also was impressed on me, the, being able to use the committees as, as ways of kind of vetting and developing people, so they could later step onto the board, kind of the farm team. And I thought that, or farm system, and I thought that was, that was a really good idea.
Absolutely. Now, team, believe it or not, our time is zooming by. So what I want to do is, on the next slide, let's just look at one question, as we're going to try to wrap up here. What are some vital points that every board should know? Could I just get one or two vital points from, from you? What do you think? Your opinion?
I could tell you one that I've had to kind of, go ahead.
Okay, Linda, you can go. I thought I heard you.
That was Trish.
Oh, Trish, go ahead.
I guess I hate to be so tactical, but the, I think every school board member should read the School Board Manual from front to back.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I could tell you one thing, and this might be part of recruitment, something that needs to be told upfront, or during orientation, or, you know, emphasized throughout. But, you know, the idea that a, a school board is an active board. There's some, some boards, organizational boards, I think, that are more passive and more, you know, you have to be willing to kind of roll up your sleeves and dig in a little bit. It's not easy being on a, on a school board.
True, it's true, very true.
This is Linda, again. I would just mention the three Rs., and, you know, roles, responsibilities, and relationships. And one of the things that I learned, or got a refreshment on at the LMU conference, was how important our relationship is with the school principal, and that should be fostered and nurtured. And it's just, it's very important to take the time and make the effort to have a really strong relationship with your principal.
You know what? That is vital. I just want to throw one other point in, and that is, keeping the lines of communication open. Because sometimes, people might not know what they don't know, and so they're not real sure about asking the question. You know, the one question that would clarify everything for them, or the few questions. So keeping the lines of communication open. So as a board, do you put something in the school newsletter that goes out, just to let people know, "We're here, we're available, how can we help? We're a resource." Is there something that goes in the neighboring parish's Sunday bulletin, to let the parishioners know, "We're here, we're available, we're supporting this school, how can we help?" So that they'll know, "Oh, there's my line of communication. Let me ask the questions of these people." So I think that that part is very important, so that, you know, people will know where to direct their questions. I think that that's important. Okay, I just have a couple other questions that came up. How important of each are your bylaws to the effectiveness of your board? That came, that was a key question that was presented. Anybody want to chime in on how important the bylaws are?
This is Linda. I think the bylaws are... I think the bylaws are really critical. They're sort of the framework of how the board goes about doing its work. And I think that every board should look at those bylaws at least annually and certainly focus on them when a new chair comes to the board.
Anybody else?
I agree with Linda.
Okay. I have a question for you. Bylaws. When you have a new board member, and I know in the manual we give you a whole list of suggested things that a new board member would need to have, like a copy of a strategic plan, copy of some minutes. And we put in their bylaws because, as we just heard, the bylaws are critical. They're how the board operates. So just something that every board member needs. And to be refreshed. And when I say refreshed, I don't mean constantly changing your board bylaws because that would be a bit traumatic. But refreshed onto people's hearts. So as you are implementing your strategic plan, and I know that many of you take five minutes or so out of your board member, a board meeting to update, but maybe taking a pinch of your bylaws just to refresh everyone. This is what we are doing about thus and so. This is what we mean by the head of school. This is, you know, to take an opportunity to clearly define in every person's heart what you're doing. That's what I was saying. Okay. I think we answered the other question. And that was, as a best practice, how often should the bylaws be reviewed? And so, you know, we think definitely annually, but ongoing way. Go ahead. Is somebody chiming in? Okay. We are almost at the top of the hour. But as we wind these programs up, when we have panelists, we like to give you the final word. So who has something they would like to share as a final word? Either about LMU, about your work, and a board, on the board, or, you know, I know there's a lot of excitement about these collaboratives. So who would like to jump in with a final word?
Sure, this is, this is Trish. I want to thank you, Dr. Brown and Jim Selinger, for putting together the concept of the collaborative. But additionally, putting together the place where school board chairs and school boards can get together. For instance, the Leadership Conference later on this month. I think that I've learned a lot more about myself and ways that I can contribute better to both our school board and to the Archdiocese just by being able to talk to others who are in the same position that I am, both from a volunteer level and from your staff level. So I want to thank you for that.
And certainly thank you for mentioning the Second Annual School Board Summit. And that will be October 22 at Loyola University. And you certainly invite everyone. We sent out a link for you to register, the Eventbrite. Everyone is certainly welcomed. It's a time not to be missed. We're going to have some wonderful sessions. And our keynote from Loyola Marymount University, Dr. Tony Sabatino is going to come. And he'll be talking about recruitment. But I do know that he'll be talking about mission integration and why that is so important to apply to the national standards and benchmarks. So we're going to have a treat. And then the Archbishop is coming, the Archbishop is coming to deliver a keynote at lunch. So there's a lot of exciting things that are going to happen at that summit. Okay, final words.
This is Linda. I just want to focus in on the Catholic identity of our schools and how important that is. And as board chairs and board members, we do our work, you know, it's God's work and we stand in His grace as we, you know, just try to do the best job possible as board members and leaders.
Thank you for saying that about our Catholic identity. You know, this is the key thing that separates our boards from everyone else, that we are Catholic schools and we're Catholic school boards. And so a part of that is on-going formation of our boards. So absolutely thank you for saying that. Chris, you get the absolute final word.
Oh, my gosh. Well, that's a lot of pressure, but okay. We just had a dedication of our merry garden at school, a beautiful garden, a dedication of Blessed Mother. And I overheard a third or fourth grader, young girl, talking to her mom and a friend of theirs and saying how happy she was to be at St. John's. And they asked her what her favorite class was. And she said, without missing a beat, she said religion. And I just, it brought me back to thinking about, like, you know, we do a lot of stuff on a school board and a lot of business and budgeting and forums and various things. But, you know, it all boils down to bringing up the young ones, so.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, everyone, it's the top of the hour. We just heard the church bells and it is 10 o'clock. Actually have 10:01. But since we really started recording at 10:05, I'm going to say, number one, remind everyone, register for the summit, October 22. I would like to also remind you that we have so many webinars already archived for your use. And then, these wonderful people who have agreed to give of their time and talent to be on this collaborative team, just to thank them when you see them around and call on them. And as, when you have your next board meeting, please acknowledge that we have this fabulous resource here in the Archdiocese of Baltimore. So want to thank everyone again. Have a great day. And we will send out a schedule for the rest of the year very soon. So stay tuned and God bless you.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.